Call the Oxford Planning Board meeting for November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two to order. Before we start. In addition to tonight's video recording on cable, Oxford Cable Access pursuant to the Massachusetts Open Meeting Law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Those making the recording must inform the Chair. All attendees are therefore advised if such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged or and permissible. Anybody recording tonight? All right. Okay, being seven o'clock, first item on the agenda, a plan is not requiring subdivision approval. Eastly side of Lester Street, A and R application owner Expedition Realty Trust, two lots. Turn the meeting over to the Vice Chair, Richard Escholos.
Okay, we have a application. No, we don't need it. Date is eleven nine, two thousand and twenty-two.
Thank you.
Lots derived from frontage on an existing way. Applicant Expedition Realty Trust of Charlton City, Mass. Surveyor is James Smith, Dover Land Survey Incorporated. The property information assessed map three, parcel KO three in the general business district. Property location is on the eastly side of Lester Street, Route fifty-six. Proposed number of lots are two. And the property is recorded in the Worcester District Registry of Deeds book fifty-seven, four eighty-seven, page two fifty-nine. Have a... Completed submission. Looks pretty straightforward to me, other than the fact he's posing thirty foot right away on each lot. Probably have to become a common driveway in the future. I didn't see anything shattering, other than the fact he's got wetlands up the union. And everything else.
Love that planning lingo.
Each side of his lot got a case of wetlands, basically.
Yeah, he has to work around a lot of restrictions, man.
We're not saying they're buildable or anything. Divide them up.
Entertain a motion to approve these as plans not requiring subdivision approval.
I'll make that a motion.
By Mark, for the discussion. There being none, Monroe call.
Aye.
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 Carried unanimously. Turn it back over to the Chair.
Thanks, Rich. Next item being seven oh five, we have a continued public hearing for twenty-seven Industrial Park East, application for site plan review, special permit, land disturbance, and stormwater management submitted by ZP Battery Development Company LLC, ten East Worcester Street, Worcester, Mass. For the construction, installation, and operation of an eight-megawatt AC energy storage system and other electrical equipment on property located in the industrial zoning district. Property is owned by Mark Hattable. We have an action date of December thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two. Okay.
Good evening, nice to see you all again. So last time we met here, we had some comments from Graves for stormwater. We have addressed all of those per the response letter on November seventh. Walsh. The only outstanding was the review for the bylaw. There's a couple of comments there. Excuse me for looking at my phone for the comments, because I didn't print it out. That was... Tree clearing deferred to the planning board for screening. And a signature block on the cover sheet. So I was really looking to get a guidance on what you guys might be looking for for screening, and address that as well. Tom Corbett, Zero Point Development. With the stormwater, though, I'll briefly go over. So we've got Industrial Park rounding here. What we did in order to, for total phosphorus, we had to adjust the stormwater. So this has been revised, this backside trench here, stormwater with the stone trench, to wrap around and kind of split this water shedding into two, and send that around into our infiltration basin, which has been designed to handle more than one inch. Everything else is the same as far as last time we had met. Same thing with the clearing extended a little bit over here, up the side, to allow excavation for the stormwater trench. Everything else is the same as far as site plan goes.
Is that the butter he's talking about on that side over there?
This side here, yeah, so the buildings-
What is that butter, is that a business-
That's not a big building. I forget the name of it, but um-
Is it an industrial building?
It's an industrial building, correct.
So it's in the industrial park?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I just wanted to ask that question.
So Tony, on the Graves review, it notes, did the fire department look at, the Oxford Fire Department review the plans?
I've met with him several times. I was hoping that he'd have a letter to you, but has he not given you a letter?
I don't think so, I don't see one.
Victory received, don't you?
Yeah, a lot of our, a lot of our discussions have been around the emergency response plan.
And access, and that's what's creating the drive around.
Yeah, it's not enough.
Yep.
Think around the whole building.
Yep, exactly. And then the, I was hoping that he would have a comment back to you. Kind of like a list of conditions, typically, like a Knox box. But we have till December thirtieth, so it's... The other comment was a, the signature page on the cover, cover of the site plan, which I didn't get to as well. So there are that to address, and I wanted to get your opinion on screening before we went ahead and just revised plans for the final time, and go from there.
I personally don't think there's really a need for screening, but this is my opinion.
Yeah, I'm just want, I mean, it's like a secured site, does it have to be locked, is it gated?
It's gated, it's locked, there's a Knox box for the fire department, police department.
So around the, I guess around the whole facility, it's enclosed in a-
Correct, yep, so this is the fence right here. So the fence fences in just this portion of the system, yeah.
And it's locked and stuff like that?
It is, yeah, it's a seven-foot fence, it's double swing gate, twelve-foot gate on each side, and it's locked for the Knox box for the fire department.
Is there anything, is there any light flashing or anything like that that happens on a regular basis because of the equipment?
No visual, no-
You would see from the street?
No lights at all onsite.
No.
No, any, any lights onsite would be brought from a technician onsite.
Awesome.
Is it Deputy Chief Sellers that you-
I've been working with Sellers, yeah, yep. So I'll follow up with him and try and, I think that would probably please you guys to get like a letter from him, right?
Yeah.
List of recommendations-
It looks like you have a hammerhead already on, that the hammerhead like-
There is a hammerhead here, yep, that's for the turnaround. So I'll, I'll follow up with Sellers, and they can get a list of recommendations, so that way we can kind of use that as a, as a condition, right?
I can follow up with him as well.
Yeah, yep, that would work.
I mean, is there any grassy areas on the site already or not, I wouldn't-
On the site currently?
Yeah.
Grassy, it's a wooded lot right now. It's kind of thin out front, it gets a little thicker in the back. This channel here-
I guess my only thing is, probably needs to be maintained. Something like, should be some kind of maintenance of the property itself.
Yeah, oh yeah, yeah, there's a maintenance plan, yeah, for sure.
As far as shrubbery and screening, I don't see a need for industrial.
Yeah, typically, in my experience permitting so far, the fire department doesn't really like the signatories outside the fence lines here. Just more, more issues that could arise from that, you know? So really, was just looking for your opinion on that, and to kind of show you guys this new plan. And I was hoping that Chief, the Deputy Chief would have a letter to you, but I will follow up with him and get back in front of you guys for hopefully a final time.
Anybody, anybody else in the board, comments, anything? All right, we're gonna put you on the agenda for the next meeting?
Yeah, we can do that for November twenty-eighth.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we continue this, continue public hearing till November twenty-eighth at-
Seven oh five.
Seven oh five.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Motion by Rich, seconded by Jeff. Any discussion? There being none, we'll call for the vote, I'll vote aye.
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 Carried unanimously, see you then.
Thank you all.
Is that gonna be on eleven twenty-eight, too? Let me just, is it subdivision?
No, that was just-
Just the submission?
Yeah, this is, no, I was just gonna ask that.
So we don't have to, are we gonna hear anything?
No. Okay, we've got an action item, approval of the minutes for September twelfth. Make a motion that we approve the minutes for September twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two.
I'll second.
Motion by Roger, seconded by Matt. Any discussion? There being none, we'll call for the vote, I vote aye.
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 Carried unanimously. Next up is a continued site plan review for two thirty-five Main Street and Fairlawn Ave. Application for site plan review, the applicant is Cumberland Farms, Inc. Property owner is two-
Missed one.
What?
Twenty-sixth.
Yeah, we missed one.
We did?
Twenty-sixth, yeah.
There's two.
On this, two action items?
No, two, two minutes.
Two minutes.
So, and Craig, Craig, can I take my abstain, I'm gonna abstain from the September twelfth, because I was not here. And Mark, you weren't either.
And Mike wasn't there, right?
No. September twelfth, yeah.
Twelve, yeah. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, of course, that's okay.
So next item, oh yeah, I missed that, didn't I? Is approval of minutes for September twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-two.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes for September twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-two.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Matt, seconded by, what?
Matt, you were absent.
I'll, I'll make-
So was Roger.
I'll make, I'll make the motion, we approve the minutes.
And I'll second it. So Matthew and Roger were absent on the twenty-sixth.
Motion by Jeff, seconded by Rich. Any discussion? Call for the vote, I vote aye.
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 Abstained. You were here.
I was here. I approved.
Carried with two abstentions.
You're awesome.
September was the last month.
Thank you.
Yeah. Now, we can move on to a continued site plan review, two thirty-five Main Street and Fairlawn Ave. Application for site plan review. Application is for Cumberland Farms, Inc. Property owner is two thirty-three Main Street, LLC, BSH Realty, Inc., AKA Cumberland Farms, Inc. Applicant is seeking to combine two parcels of land, two thirty-five Main and five Fairlawn Ave. The application, applicant proposes to raise all structures and redevelop both parcels as one development site with new gas pumps, a convenience store, parking, and associated site amenities. Property is located within the Village Business Zoning District. We have an action date of today. Very ominous. Okay, Tony, do you want to bring us up the speed?
Sure.
So included in your packets are the comments from the peer reviewer, as well as the response from the applicant Civil Design Group, including revised plans, as well, which I anticipate they will go over their comments, and their revised plans for the board tonight.
You guys want to address any of the comments? The revised plans?
Sure. I guess we'll start with, for the record, my name is Phil Henry with Civil Design Group. We can start going over the peer review comments. So with regards to stormwater, there was no peer review comments relative to stormwater. He agreed with our, our design, or it appears that he agreed with our design. He did note some, some minor site plan changes and some notes that I'm happy to go through if somebody has this particular inquiry about that. But I guess I'll, I'll stick to the, to the higher level stuff. In Graves's letter of substance, he noted that there were some foot candle readings behind the property that were just over one foot candle. And we went back to the lighting vendor, and they had recognized that they did not model the six-foot fence that's back there. So they put that in their model, and then, so that fence, so that, so that, that lighting illumination reduced it down to zero. And keep in mind, there's really, there's, there's a sight light here that is facing plant south. Really, the lighting that Jeff had indicated was some foot candle readings just over the property line here, just over one, which is related to the soffit lighting, the recessed lighting in the soffit of the, of the building itself. So those are, those are definitely downcasted, because they have nowhere else to go. But needless to say, the foot candle reading was, the model was revised, and there were no sight light modifications necessary. So that was of note. The second thing that Jeff noted was, he would, he would like to see, which is comment four, no, that's, that's the sight light, comment five, relative to seeing if, if the applicant would be amenable to, to adding some noise reduction features on the back of their property because of the, the units that are on the property, or on the rooftop, I should say. And at the time when I submitted this, which was Friday afternoon, the, the plans were not ready, or that, that one architectural sheet was not ready. It has come in, and we have that today, do you, do you have the paper copy?
Yeah, if you could, yeah, I don't think it's, it's not on your-
It's not on, yeah, I've been on the road all day, so I have not a chance to- It's, it's, it's sheet A two dot, two zero one, all the site plan related items.
So what did they do to address that?
Oh, oh, so it's, it's in the plan that's in your folder. The new one that-
The full set here?
With the response file?
No, there was a, you said sort of-
Oh, maybe it's within-
If you go to the back, step here, bingo, yeah. So those, I mean, you can take all of it, because we're gonna talk about all of it, but it's the ones with the elevations.
Do you want to talk about the noise reduction?
Yeah, so this is something Cumberland Farms does when they're abutting a residential's use, like they're doing here. And so what you have is an enclosure on three sides. So the roof is open, just to allow heat to, to pass, because these are all rooftop mechanicals, but then you just have a solid wall on those other three sides. So it's something that they've had engineered, you know, architecturally designed, and that's what they would be proposing here.
All right, say that one more time.
Sure. So, so on the-
Now that we get that on stage-
Yeah, 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 so, okay, so you've got it in front of you. So on the back of the building, there are the rooftop mechanicals, the air conditioning, the condensers, et cetera. Previously, they were just like in a open porch, so called. And so one of the comments from peer reviewer was, maybe think about putting something up there to block the noise that could exist, that could come out, because there are residential uses immediately adjacent. Cumberland Farms, then, and this is new, and I've just done this in one other municipality with them. And it was just last week that they had this all designed, so it's, it's brand-new design, engineered, and it's, I think it's a twelve-foot-high wall, solid, and then the top is open, just to allow airflow. And so that just pushes the sound up instead of out, and allows the appropriate circulation.
It's like a mini screening type thing.
Precisely, yeah, yeah. Precisely, and it's just, yeah, it's just a wall, and it kind of fits into the architecture, so it's not even gonna look-
Blends right into the-
You got it, yeah, so you'll see the elevations that you have in front of you.
I think it's a good idea, because otherwise, it's second level, so you're right over that stockade fence in the people's backyard.
Yeah, I'd only be concerned about snow buildup during a blizzard. That doesn't hap, happens in the back of my house, I mean, I, it does-
It's gonna fall right in.
It does blow off the roof right into there.
I'm sure there's a lot of heat being generated out of that.
There may be, there may be some of that, but I'm just, I just raise a caution that it's open.
So it runs off, just like a roof?
Yeah, yep.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not worried about that, I mean, it, it, snow does tend to build up. You guys will find that out, I know it's new to you.
It'll either work.
Yeah, oh yeah, oh yeah, oh yeah.
You guys gonna be the one shoveling that thing out?
You know what?
Nice. Just add in the condition.
Just use that as a caution. Because it's like a big box up there, ready to hold stuff.
And, and the, and the last bit of homework that we had from our last hearing was, was outside of the, of the, of the review letter. It was related to pedestrian access, if you recall.
Yep.
On, on Fairlawn Ave. So what we did was, we, we added a five-foot-wide concrete sidewalk with, with a ramp here, crosswalk, a receiving ramp, and then a sidewalk that ties into the building sidewalk. So I'm, I'm happy to zoom in a little bit more. So that's a little bit clearer picture. So, so the sidewalk would, would stretch from this existing, or this new relocated sidewalk, which we all agreed to defer to DOT.
Could possibly change.
Yeah, this could potentially change, but regardless, from, from where my mouse is here, back-
You're bringing it back to your store, that's great.
And it's, it's got the technical warnings on, handicap ramps.
That's a good improvement.
Very nice.
That's a nice improvement to that.
So that pretty much sums up the, the high level of the, of the, of the review letter. I'm happy to answer anything more specific, though.
Okay, well, as you know, I made a comment about the height of the sign. Okay, and on my way home from this meeting last time, I looked at every, every sign, I, every sign in every gas station from here to Route twenty, okay? And most of them are much lower than what you had proposed. And I had, happened after I did that, I kind of feel vindicated now. I watched the ZBA meeting of the twentieth of October, okay? And the historical commission suggested they'd like it lower. Okay? So now I'm looking at your plan, and by golly, it's lower. I thank you for that. I think it, it, it makes a, a village business, business area there, that, that business much nicer. Doesn't stick out like a sore thumb.
And one of the things, if I, if I could, and Phil, if you want to go, I know you just got to there. So this is, it's the same sign that we had proposed before, just five feet lower, and if you want to go back to the site plan. So we would appreciate, because we're gonna have to go back through the zoning board of appeals process, and one of the things, because I've driven around as well, and especially if you're coming from here and traveling south, you see that V-shaped sign that's just on the other side of Fairlawn. And it's about twenty feet tall, but it gets broader. And where we had, yeah, exactly, and where we had the new sign originally proposed, we had it tucked back into the site at fifteen feet. Where the sign currently is, so what Phil has done, and if you want to maybe zoom in a little, Phil, that would be good. What Phil's done is, he's lined up the sign face of the proposed sign with the sign face of the existing sign. I mean, I mean the sign edge, right? The, the leading edge of this proposed sign is the same as the leading edge of the existing sign. Because that gives you some context as you're driving down.
Yep.
Because if you tuck it back, you're not gonna be able to see it from this direction, and that defeats kind of the whole purpose of it. So one of the things we would like to do is to keep the leading edge of those signs the same. One of the issues is that you've, you've seen from the sign proposal, I think, we're proposing a nicer sign. It's got the stone structure and then the stone planter, so it's going to encroach further near the property line, even though you see the distance from the property line to the traveled way, it's still gonna encroach closer to the property line. So if possible, we would appreciate the planning board maybe voicing support for the sighting of the sign as we're proposing it as we go back through the zoning board of appeals process. And so that's why we're happy to drop it to twenty feet, but to keep it in the same location, because I think, like you said, then it doesn't stick out like a sore thumb, it's in the same place. It, it remains to be visible from the traffic to the north as it travels south, so just-
What's the, what's the encroaching, I didn't see the measurement on the sign, but it looks roughly to be about the edge of the planter versus the edge of the pylon for the signs?
Yeah, Phil-
About two feet, two and a half feet?
Do you know what the distance is, if we go back to the-
The existing?
No, 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 so if it's, if it's five feet to the sign face, do we know the distance from the sign face to the edge of the planter?
Let me, just so I'm sure what you're asking, so you have the uprights. And you basically want to keep the upright where it is in terms of distance to the current. You want to use the existing sign as a blueprint for where that upright will be.
Where the face of the sign will be. So not the up, the upright will be closer to the front property line than the face. And maybe if you go to the sign plan-
Then what's the total distance that we're-
That's what we've got to figure out, yeah.
Yeah, so the planter itself is, it's a six by fourteen, so it's, 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 it probably extends-
Two feet.
Two, two feet closer.
It looks like two, two and a half feet.
That's what I think, yeah.
Yeah.
That's sign plan.
Is there a set-
No, no, sign, sign plan, yeah.
Is there a minimum setback for a sign?
Yeah, I think it's fifteen feet, which is why our previous submission complied with that.
I guess that's not gonna line a site for anything, it's not gonna-
No, it's, it's tucked so far back and where you-
It's not gonna-
You got it.
Three plus two is five.
The planter's only two foot, so it's probably a two-foot over.
Let me see these little coverts now, these little-
Is the old sign that's across the street a pre-existing non-conforming? Too close to the sideline?
I would say all of that.
We just want the pre-existing non-conforming to be the same pre-existing non-conforming they're going down the street.
Yeah.
I think that's, hit the nail right on the head there, Mark.
And we just approved the site plan for them.
Yeah, we just approved the site plan across the street, and the sign never-
We didn't do anything, right?
Yeah, they have no clue what they-
We never did anything about it.
They want to keep their backlit sign up.
It might be, are they keeping the same sign?
I have no clue.
Yeah, we didn't do anything, we never-
Yeah, we didn't do anything, we just did them.
We weren't addressing, they were leaving the sign exactly what it is and what it was.
It's a beauty, they should keep it.
I don't have a problem with this.
I don't, two feet, I don't- I don't have a problem with that. I don't have a problem with two feet, okay?
Well, that's good, we appreciate that.
We'll have to go through the process.
Can we just word it the way I set it up?
Okay, any other discussions on anything? All right, do we have to close the public hearing?
There was no public hearing.
All right, then we don't have to close them now?
Don't have to close anything.
Okay.
But you're here, Mary.
Well-
Any more discussion?
Do you, do you anticipate any problems with ZBA as far as correcting your drawings?
Should I?
I don't know, and I, you have to go-
No, no, I, I mean-
It's a funny thing, you know, you never, yeah, it's a totally different board for us, too, and again, some things have changed, you know?
I mean, I think it makes a lot of sense to do this. The sign as it currently exists is already pre-existing non-conforming, and so we're only asking for, I think, maybe a couple extra feet from that. So I, I would say it's the minimus, if anything, but we'll go through the process. So I feel they were good last time, I think, dropping it down to twenty certainly and not messing around.
Already is a positive, yeah.
Should be okay.
But if they don't give it to you, you can always just kick it back and where you have it approved on, so, you know? Okay, sounds good. Any more discussion? Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve this site plan for Cumberland Farms.
Oh, did you have, I'm sorry, hold on, Mark, did you have something?
We have updated sheets that we can reference in the-
These are them right here.
Those are them?
This isn't the whole thing, though, right?
No, no, so Phil-
We didn't submit everything.
These are additions to the what we have.
Correct.
But they were all.
I think Mary has all of them, so Phil can get the.
I want to make sure all the dates are the same. Are they all 11-10?
Craig, you've got the revised plan.
Well, this is a revised one.
11-11.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, 11-10.
Except those, so the exterior elevations where Phil's cursor is right now.
Yeah, so some sheets didn't change.
This is 11-10.
We're adding A200 and A201 to this.
Yeah, so I would, yeah, I would reference 11, I submitted on 11-11. We could submit a full complete.
This is in here, right? Is this one in here?
No.
Yes, the site plan.
Everything is in this.
Yeah, everything is in, everything was submitted on Friday.
Except for the mechanical.
Correct, except for those two. Yeah, eight, eight, two, over.
That, just these were.
Those are just depictions, really, then.
Yeah, okay.
I think you want to refer those to.
Okay, I want to, I want to, based upon plans dated 11-11, 2022.
But incorporating sheet A200 and A201 dated.
They have the revised.
Eight, 17, 22.
No, this one, those are not dated.
How about submitted 11-14?
11-10.
Five.
I mean, you don't intend to have this in your plan set.
Yeah, we do. That's, yes, we have two, if you go right here, follow my mouse. These two, see these exterior elevations, A200, A201? What you have is the updated, those are the updated ones.
200 and 201.
It's a date in this.
Those are already in there, yeah.
This set has eight, has them both in it.
But the date's wrong, maybe.
They're just not stapled in there.
No, that's.
Oh, we're good then.
We're good. The reference in the master.
Yeah, they're on, they're on the index for the.
Yep.
Perfect.
There's no date on this one.
You didn't put a, you didn't put a new date on your new.
He's an engineer.
I'm the engineer.
We could say submitted today, though, right?
That was my suggestion.
Yeah, just say submitted on, like, what came.
Yeah, I would say as submitted.
Guys been on the road all day.
I just want you guys to be aware.
This one has a date, and those are included in here. So if you just refer to this set, we're good. Who cares if there's a date on those or not? Those are included in here.
Are they?
Yeah, or they will be when.
They will be with a new date, obviously.
They're on the index, Jeff.
Okay.
They're.
Right there.
A200.
But they're showing, they're showing August 17.
Okay.
And here we are in November, okay? And they're just telling me this is brand-new, fresh off the presses, okay? Without a new date.
So just refer to those when you make your motion.
I like what you said.
They're not even revised according to this thing. That's what they are.
Just say they were submitted today. I like that.
Okay. Okay, were A200 and 201 as submitted today?
Perfect.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made by Rich.
Oh, no, no, sorry, Roger seconded this.
Roger seconded.
Motion made by Rich, seconded by Roger. Any discussion? Any more discussion? All those in favor, call for the vote. I vote aye.
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 That's it?
Thank you, guys. Good luck.
So.
What do we say, six months from now, is that all of us?
Can I just make a, can I make a suggestion, if you want, or maybe someone could make a motion, that we maybe send a letter as a board to the ZBA recommending that they approve the revised site location, sign location?
I'll make that a motion.
I'll second it.
Okay.
We're all in favor of that.
Motion by Jeff, seconded by Chris. Any discussion? If you're comfortable with the verbiage, right, Mary?
Yeah.
Okay, call for the vote. I vote aye.
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 Great, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Good luck.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Let me talk to him about doing the Senate.
Let us know if you strike oil.
Yeah. Hazardous waste.
You think? You think?
Bunch of cooking oil.
You think?
Dead lobster tails.
Okay. Next item is Eight Town Forest Road, new commercial building request for temporary occupancy. We had a letter on that, right?
Yeah. Write it up, try your luck.
I'm at home with my husband.
On the couch.
It's okay.
Say your name and.
Yep, my name is Nick Gregory Bernstein. And I am the property owner and the owner of the company that will, that intends to occupy the property. We currently operate across the street, and we are looking to get temporary occupancy. We're almost done. This has been a long project. We faced quite a few delays between labor shortages, material shortages, et cetera, et cetera. But we're in the home stretch. We had a visit from the engineer from DPW today, and he checked out our stormwater system, did an inspection, and I'm not sure if he got a letter off to you, Mary.
I didn't see anything, but if it was after five, I think I've got emails.
Okay, no, he stopped by before lunchtime, and he said he was gonna try to get something out to you, but, okay. His indication to me was that everything looked good to him. He did ask a question about some temporary erosion controls around a stockpile in the back that we will probably not be able to move until springtime, and I have no problem doing that. So, let's see, what else can I tell you?
So what is left to be done?
So basically, we are hoping to get the remainder of our final sign-offs on the building permit this week. We got the fire alarm system installed and tested today. So once I get the report from the alarm company, we'll get deputy chief sellers out to do an inspection. The electrical is, say, 99% done. We have some hookups to do on equipment that is being installed for the HVAC. It's on-site. It just needs a day or two to get wrapped up. The plumbing is signed off. Final inspection is done with that. What else do we have? The HVAC will be inspected once it's connected and, you know, running. So basically, you know, the envelope is done, all the doors and windows exterior-wise are installed, insulation, all that kind of stuff. The sidewalk in the front of the building is in. We've got binder down as far as pavement goes, yep.
I saw, I thought it was on the ninth, so.
Yeah.
Is that gonna get done this week?
It is, yep. It's scheduled for Wednesday, pending the weather.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, well, if that's what you're running this time of year.
Yeah, yeah. We really wanted to get it done last week because the weather was warm, nice, but.
You don't want to go through a winter with binder on.
No, we got binder down before last winter, but we really want to get it wrapped up, you know? So we're hoping that we can squeeze that in this week if the weather stays warm. It's gonna be tough. But other than that, we've got, the majority of landscaping is done. Grass is planted, actually growing pretty well. But we have some trees to plant and, you know, odds and ends like that. And otherwise, as far as site plan goes, it's really just the sort of back of the site, which I don't know if you guys have anything in your files for the, but. Let me orient myself a little bit here. I apologize if this is not on the board, but basically, so if you can see, the road is over here, and in the back, we've got a gravel storage area. And in this area, we've got a stockpile of dirt that needs to go away. And the plan is to export it outsite. We just haven't found a place for it to go. So that may end up having to wait until the spring, you know, frozen trucks, et cetera. It's hard to get rid of dirt in the wintertime. Not many people want to take it. They got no place to put it, basically. So the plan is to wrap that up in the springtime as soon as the weather warms up and we can get it out of there. There's no construction or drainage or anything that needs to go in under it, so it's not really holding anything up. It's just kind of hanging out there, so.
So in terms of stabilization, you're okay? You said the grass is growing?
Correct, yep. So the detention basin is in. It's online. Like I said, Jared Duval was out today and inspected it. All the catch basins are in, connected, et cetera, et cetera. All the drainage is there. Basically, everything except where that stockpile is, is fully stabilized. We've got grass growing. And in places where we either have high water velocity or steep slopes, we have river out in rock. But pretty much everything except that stockpile is mostly squared away.
Okay. So if we were to go ahead with this, Tony, we could, we could put stipulations in it, too, can't we? Obviously, nothing we do is gonna, you still have to do the electrical. All that still has to be checked. But we could, we could, we could do it, we'd do it subject to a positive review from Jared, right?
Yeah.
Jared's fire department.
Yeah, all the boards, yeah. All the, but it's took it just as temporary, too. We could issue it for.
Temporary, talking about six months.
Six months, yeah.
Correct, yep.
All right. Any more discussion? Any questions?
Well, do we have, are we approving, are we approving temporary occupancy subject to a punch list of items that are gonna be completed within six months?
Yep.
Yes. So what, we're gonna enumerate those things? Because I started doing that, yeah.
You certainly could.
Oh, it's list, yeah, yeah.
So I just wanted to say, too, and I'm sorry to interrupt. You're not approving temporary occupancy. You're recommending temporary occupancy to the building.
Inspector.
Based on, yeah, all the lists of things.
Yeah, so they still have, you still have to come back to us, right?
Yeah.
For the final approval?
For the final, and the ASBILs and everything else.
Well, that's, maybe that's when we check to make sure all the boxes are checked.
Yes. Right. So remaining stormwater grading, removal of the stockpile, landscaping. Are you relatively confident you're gonna get the paving done before they close up for the year?
You could still include it. You could still, I would still include it.
It's absolutely gonna get done before we get our final sign-off from you guys.
So that's gotta go with that.
Yeah.
What do we, binder codes down. We're calling this what?
Top code.
Top code.
Final code, yeah.
Yeah. And I actually just got an email from the surveyor. The ASBIL drawing is almost done. It's all been surveyed. He just is working on finalizing the actual prints. So I should have that to you hopefully tomorrow.
It's gonna be signed off by all pertinent boards, you know, electrical, plumbing.
And they have to come back to us in six months anyway, so.
I'm for it.
Anybody want to make a motion?
I move that the board recommend a temporary occupancy permit subject to the owner completing the remaining stormwater grading, removal of the stockpile from the site, final landscaping, and top coat paving.
Can we also put something in there for what Jared recommended you go find the conservation commission and have that approved as far as any runoff from that stockpile?
Subject to the approval of Jared Duval, Conservation Commission, Fire Department.
I'll put it.
All pertinent boards. Thank you, Jeff.
Okay, motion by Mark, seconded by Matt. Any more discussion?
Just for a period of six months, right?
That's more than enough time, right?
Yeah.
It should be, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, yep.
Fingers crossed.
We tend not to make them longer than that.
Well, who knows what kind of winter we're gonna have, but.
Yeah, November.
So when is that? Is that May?
Yeah, May, yeah. You got all of April to get.
Yeah, the last three weeks will be busy.
Yeah, my own, my only comment, Mark, is that, and not, nothing against you, rather than relying on what he says needs to be done, we could have said as, as proposed on the plan, as required in the original permit. But that's fine. Motion seconded. No more discussion. Call for the vote. I vote aye.
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 Carrigan Enslie.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Appreciate it.
Next up in red, 46, 48, and 50 Harwood Street, special permit. Common driveway, extension of time for action and continuation of public hearing. Extend action date to January 31, 2023, and continue hearing date to January 10, 2023. So that was requested by the developer.
Correct.
We have that written. You gave me that, right?
We have an email coming, yeah.
From Dan.
From the developer.
Okay. All right, so.
I move to approve that request.
Okay, a second. Motion by Mark, seconded by Roger. Any discussion?
Oh, I'm sorry. So hearing date of January 10, 2023 at 7:05.
Can, can we fill out a time for action form? I know you got an email.
Yes.
We can.
It can be sent to him, so he could sign it and send it back. Okay, you're doing it based off his email, which we should be using our form.
So what is the action date now?
January 31st?
So the.
Oh, right now?
It says extend action date, too, so we're not, we're not gonna be in a time crunch if we wait till the next meeting?
I'm not 100% sure.
We'd have to pull the file.
With the.
I don't mind doing it. He doesn't have to be here to complete the form now, but I want, I think it should be on a form. That's what we got the form for, to have something in writing that he signs, not just an email. And it can be, we're going off his email to do this, a motion to extend it. But I think we need the document within the file after it's done.
Okay, so we're not gonna, we're gonna rescind that motion? That we're gonna do?
Withdrawn.
Okay, motion is withdrawn. So we're gonna find out what date, right?
Yes.
I hope it's not like today.
We should pull the file, find out.
November 11.
Huh?
It was November 11.
Oh. What does that mean? If it was, what does that mean? If we were supposed to vote by November 11?
We're supposed to get an extension.
Action date was November 11.
Okay.
Let's get the file. What's the date of that email? I didn't see a copy of that email.
Oh. Oh, that one.
Haven't written on it.
Oh, it's November 14th, the county's email.
It is today.
At the last meeting, it was the request of the board to get a communication from the outfit, what he intends to do.
Yeah, and that, but that included him filling out the form. Follow, Tony? We should do it to our form.
I know.
I don't know what's the email look like. I don't even have a copy.
The action date is today, though. Do we really need to push that hard for a signed piece of paper?
I think we should have it for the record.
For the record only. I didn't say.
He's saying not to.
I didn't say that was a mutant point, what they were trying to do down there. I don't, I don't say that. I was saying, as we need a record, not just his email.
Send it out and then get it back for the next meeting.
We can address his email. What was his email dated?
His email is dated November 9.
He's basically giving us all the information he wants to put in that form, but he just doesn't sign the form. I guess he doesn't care to come to the town hall and try to help us out.
Well, just tell him he needs to come to the, don't even mail it. Tell him he needs to come to the town hall and complete it.
So today is the action date. What happens if we don't do anything today?
You can deny it, or it's gonna get constructively.
Can we, can we, can we extend it subject to a letter from the developers? So why don't we make that?
An appropriately signed form.
Right. Okay, so. Okay, so do you wanna make that motion?
Yeah, just give me the details and I'll, I'll make it so that Mary can make a coherent record.
So the motion would be.
I'm glad you're enjoying this.
Motion, the motion would be to extend the action date to January thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three, and continue the hearing to January tenth, twenty-twenty-three.
Subject to?
Subject to a properly executed extension form.
Completed by the applicant.
Completed and delivered to the planning department.
By what date? I think we should put a date on it, cause obviously it doesn't follow.
November fourteenth. And if he, and if he doesn't meet the date.
No, but I just mean that, we should put a date on it, cause he's, you know.
Agreed.
You know what I mean?
What do you, what are you agreeing to?
That, that, he, he submit the completed form.
Right.
The applicant submit the completed form by November twenty-eighth.
Perfect. Sounds good.
Make them, yeah.
And that's party of motion.
Do you wanna include failure to do so will resolve the denial of the, the application?
Yes.
Yeah, that way there, we denied it if he doesn't, doesn't do it.
The form is constructively approved.
Can we, can we, can we deny an application just by that?
I, I think, I think he's bound by the email personally, but to Richard's point, we have forms for this.
Right.
He gave us all the information according to the form, we want the form for the file.
Okay.
And it should be on record with the town clerk's office.
Right.
Excellent, alright, so we'll include that, um.
And if it doesn't reach us by the twenty-eighth, we, we deny it.
Okay.
Yeah.
So.
Ten days, right? No.
So he made a motion to.
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
That'll be our meeting.
That's generous.
He doesn't pay anything in by our meeting, it's denied.
It's one piece of paper.
I know.
Alright, so.
I don't know, he disappeared off the face of the earth since he submitted this thing months ago.
Okay, that motion was made by Mark, anybody wanna second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Chris, any more discussion? All those in favor, I'll call for the vote, I vote aye.
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 Carried unanimously. That was easy. Alright. Okay, so uh, Tony brought this up before the meeting. We're looking for a new town planner, and I'm looking for anybody that wants to join a uh screening committee to screen potential candidates and supply like a, like a recommendation.
Who is the current town planner?
That gentleman right there.
So I'm currently serving, um, since October, um, dual roles as planner and assistant, uh, town manager downstairs.
Oh, we didn't know that, so congratulations.
All the above.
So the, um, we have put a posting out for town planner position, and currently in the process of getting applications in. Um, screening committee and this board serves a critical role in that individual. Um, and this committee would make a recommendation, um, and partake in any of the interviews that would be forthcoming.
What's the time commitment?
A matter of hours, I would say.
Probably at least four, probably at least four interviews, right?
It's not a, a heavy commitment, I, I would say, um.
Last time we did it for Tony.
Thank you.
It was nice, yeah, if it was Zoom meeting, it was nice, I, I do, but, I can't make a, I know, I can't.
I think it's a.
I remember, I remember doing the Zoom.
I'm willing to serve.
Fantastic, anybody else?
I will.
Matt, Mark, Chris?
I'm, I'll second.
Okay, Roger?
Sure.
Sure. Jeff?
Four, you got four, that's good.
You don't need that many.
Yeah. Do the new guys, do the new guys. You got five, yeah.
Here pressure, I'll, I'll join also.
I've been here two more.
Yeah. That's, that's a lot, that's good, the more you have, the better, the more.
And I, I imagine Tony would, and Mary would keep us up to date with what's going on, give us a heads up.
So is it posted, Tony?
It is.
It is posted, so how long has it been posted for?
Probably six or eight weeks.
How long?
Six or eight weeks.
Six or eight, it's already been posted six or eight weeks?
Perhaps.
It's been a long time. I think last time, well, we did, we had like ten over ten hours.
Been seamless.
So have you gotten any?
Happened to see it on the website, on the employment.
Yes, we have.
People under employment.
They should've jumped all over that.
What? I don't want that. I'm retired. Last time we had like, it started with like ten app, we had like ten or twelve apps.
Yeah, yeah.
And then people just kinda.
We had to whittle it down before there were any interviews.
Alright.
Tony says we've got a good demand, uh, supply of candidates.
A good supply, and there's a lot of demand out there, but a good supply.
Okay, uh, let's move on to submissions. We have a submission for a scenic road permit.
And if I may, uh, Mr. Chairman, at the last meeting, um, the application was deemed to be incomplete. We have received a completed application along with the plan, um, that is being used for reference here is, um, plan that shows the layout of the driveway and, um, the, the, um, stone wall. The application submitted completed plan, we do have to advertise it, um, scenic road requires public hearing. Would recommend if the board wishes to, uh, schedule it for the meeting in December, which would be December twelfth.
So everybody knows.
That's seven oh five.
It's a scenic road, and if you wanna modify any stone walls.
Sure, and I.
You have to apply for this permit.
Under, under the, um, state law, the scenic road, um, the scenic road provision, um, does require planning boards through a special permit, we must hold a public hearing. It is a requirement designated roads, towns have, uh, that designate their roads as scenic, and scenic road is, is one of such. So it is a requirement to have a public hearing, to have notice. So that's, that's where we are.
So, but as far as you know, he's just proposing to remove a little stone wall to get a driveway.
Correct, it's, it's residential, um, it's in residential zoning district.
He's cutting down the whole stone wall and the whole side.
And he's going right through some wetlands too, right?
Correct, correct, um, and the applicant has gone before Conservation Commission, um, as it relates to the wetlands, of course. And during the public hearing, I would expect one meeting. Board may wish to ask questions whether, how they intend to modify the wall.
Is there a, uh, motion to accept this submission?
I'll make it, I'll see if you accept it.
Second.
Motioned by Jeff, seconded by Roger, any discussion? Call for the vote, I vote aye.
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 Carried unanimously, thank you.
And schedule a public hearing?
And schedule, uh, did anyone make a motion to schedule a public?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to, to public hearing for what's the date?
December twelfth.
December twelfth, at seven oh five.
Second.
My Jeff seconded by Roger. Discussion, the dean, I'll call for the vote, I vote aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Carried unanimously. Alright. Okay, another submission, Ash, Ashworth Drive, application for land disturbance administrative approval. Applicant is Eastland Partners, Inc., owner Oxford Reserve LLC. Property identified on assessor's map, oh, three parcel A zero five. Stockpile materials within existing cleared areas outside wetland buffer zones on Ashworth Drive. Total work area is approximately thirty-four thousand square feet.
Mr. Chairman, I'm stepping down since I'm a father.
Okay, Tony, you wanna give us the rundown?
Sure, and, and I believe, uh, Mr. O'Connell is here as well, who could provide some more information on it.
Sorry about that.
But our DPW director has, um, reviewed the initial application and, um, is recommending an administrative review under the new land disturbance, but, while Mr. O'Connell provides an overview.
Good evening, uh, for the record, Steve O'Connell from Turning Point Engineering, on behalf of the applicant. Uh, quite simply, as you stated, Mr. Chairman, the administrative, uh, land disturbance, uh, approval for the, an area uh, that's currently, uh, cleared from prior development activities on the project from prior owner. Uh, the total area will be approximately thirty-four thousand square feet, under, which is under an acre for your threshold for, uh, the next level of, of permit, for this land disturbance permit, so, uh, well, you know, well within, uh, in the allowable area. Um, the reason for the land disturbance permit, uh, as you are probably aware, the activities out front of this property along South Bridge Road Route twenty, which this board issued, uh, site plan review and, and earth removal permit is actively being, uh, blasted and drilled and, uh, kind of a little bit of, uh, shuffling around of, of, of space that was needed, so the, the next area that was scheduled, uh, was planned to be drilled and blasted, needed to be stripped, but there was nowhere available to put that stripped top and subsoil. So made sense, short haul out back to an area also owned by, you know, the applicant. Just some, do some stockpiling, not a lot of material. It's essentially done. Walked the site with, uh, with, with Judy from Conservation, met with Jared a number of times. But, but that's, uh, that's the general crux of it. Emergency controls are, were, you know, were installed, uh, additional emergency controls were installed at the request of Judy in areas that were kind of outside of this, but were, you know, quasi-related. So I think we've answered a lot of their questions, or all their questions, and happy to answer any questions you may have.
Tony, did you say that Jared still wants to review it? There's more review to be had here with Jared?
Under the administrative review.
Okay.
So if the board would refer over to, to Jared to, to provide his comments.
Alright, so then we're out of it, right? Is that how it works? We're not gonna be approving this, Jared's gonna be approving it?
Correct, under the administrative process, yes, and then we'll provide the board with, with copies.
How, how are you, how are you getting the material to the site?
There's an existing haul road.
Yeah.
From the.
You're going up, straight up the hill?
Yeah, yep. You've been, if you haven't been there, it's changed quite a bit. It's, yeah, it's actively, actively used, yep, they could, uh.
You can get up, cause I, I've walked the site, this is a while ago, but it's a pretty steep hill, but.
Yeah, yeah, no, no problems, that's, it's changed quite a bit since the last time you were probably there. Um, but yeah, that, they're using the existing haul road.
So you're not, you're not taking around twenty and going up?
Absolutely not, yeah.
All off-road. Any other discussion?
So the action for this board is just to approve an administrative review?
Refer to DPW.
Refer, refer to DPW for administrative review.
Okay, I'll make that a mo- can I, should I make that a motion?
Yes.
Sure, I'll make that a motion that, um, we send this to the DPW and for their administrative review.
Seconded.
Roger seconded? Motion by Chris seconded by, huh?
That was Mark.
Oh, it's Mark, sorry. Well, you had your hand here and then he had the mask on, so. The voices are just flying around. Uh, motion by Chris seconded by Mark. Any more discussion? Call for the vote, I vote aye.
I vote aye.
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 I did.
Aye.
It didn't come through.
Carried. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Good luck.
Thanks, Tony. I'll be back in touch with you. Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, we'll follow. Lots of stuff. Fluid situation. Fluid, yeah.
Alright, Richard's back on the board.
Good night.
Um, planning director report.
Just real quick, um, three items. Um, for informational purposes, um, Board of Selectmen have, um, completed their, their review of the RFI for the retail marijuana, um, proposals. And, um, there is currently one that, um, we are working on an HCA host community agreement with at this time. And would anticipate, um, the particular projects FDM, which is proposed to be on the corner of twenty and fifty-six. And, uh.
Tony, excuse, so is that where that old bank used to be?
Opposite.
On the other side?
Where the, the club used to be, the rest. Yes.
Patron of the arts.
Thank you for, thank you for the clarification.
So there is, uh, there is a, um, an active, um, an, an active proposal, right, um, for, um, for that site, so would anticipate sometime later this winter that there'll be a community input meeting required through the, um, through the State Commission and so on. And eventually at some time in twenty twenty-three, um, should there be an execute HCA, as there has been in the past, and as the board is so familiar with the process, um, that there'll be an application before this board for the special permit.
They're trying to use that building out, eh?
No, no, they.
That building is gonna be a turnaround for.
Right, that's what I was gonna say, right, cause they're taking part of that as the twenty project.
Correct.
Redesign. By Chili's that turned around, I think.
Correct.
So it'll be on the back half of the site.
Correct, correct, which still stands a little over an acre there.
Yeah, yeah, there's a lot of, there's a lot of land.
Little over an acre, and then we also, um, received a, a proposal for a cultivation, um, business over in the industrial, Boulder Industrial Park. Company's called Procure, and, um, the team presented, I believe at the last Board of Selectmen meeting, and, um, Board's having also gave direction to the town manager to, to enter into an HCA. So also would anticipate sometime in twenty twenty-three that, uh, be an application before, before this board. And the last item is, um, great news, um, the housing production plan. We applied for a grant, um, maybe a year and a half ago, and, uh, we did get word, um, that, um, not from that grant, but through an, another opportunity, um, that we will receive funding for that, so to, it's, it's gonna say to update an HPP, Housing Production Plan, we've never, um, had one in the books, um, but this would be an opportunity to, to create such a plan, um, to look at housing demand, uh, forecast future housing need. Um, but critically important, this HPP, it's one of the best practices. When we're looking at, um, forty B and we're looking at our housing inventory, um, it's having an, an approved housing production plan, and so long as the town is making incremental progress in accordance with the plan, then the, in this case, the ZBA would have more flexibility in, uh, review of potential comprehensive permits, potential forty B projects and so on. So it's, um, it's, I, I think it's great news, we'll be teaming up with, um, I believe with CMRPC. Uh, we will be teaming up with CMRPC, our regional planning authority, to assist with that. So we have that cooking, we also have open space rec plan, which, uh, about, ready to, to, to kick off. And, um, we're just finalizing the MVP, um, the municipal vulnerability preparedness plan, so a lot of planning going on.
How do you keep track of all the abbreviations?
You wouldn't be in.
Planner lingo, I think.
You wouldn't be in government if you couldn't.
There's a test we need to take. But that's all, Mr. Chairman.
So I got something, through the chair, could I ask a question?
Sure.
Subdivision rules and regulations. We gotta get something out there, Tony. Uh, because this, you know, there are big subdivisions gonna be coming into town, okay? I'm sure they're even working on them now as we speak. And this, uh, issue with, uh, sidewalk width and, uh, other things that we brought up that you started. Now, I, I bear in mind, you're doing something different now, but I don't think we can wait for a town planner to come in here and get this thing done, I'd, I'd like to see it done by the end of the year. Have, uh, have our, uh, you know, public hearing and, uh, update the subdivision rules and regulations, okay? And I'm still questioning where five feet came from. So be it, that's what we were told, just wanna make sure that we were doing everything correct. And I, and I mentioned the fact that should we be changing the way we construct our roads based upon the, uh, truck traffic that's, uh, going, hitting the, the, the streets now, including trash trucks and everything else, because roads don't seem to be lasting like they used to, we know, so. I just think we gotta put, keep pushing that, cause, uh, there's big subdivisions gonna be, we're gonna see big subdivisions next year.
What do you know? What do you got, inside line there?
Oh, no, it's, yeah, it's, it's on the table. Ashworth Drive, okay? They're still working on that. Okay, that could come.
Do we have something that we could roll out? Maybe it's not perfect?
Yeah.
Sure.
Something that would maybe not get us to exactly where we wanna be, but it's better than what we have right now?
Yes, so for the next meeting, I will, um, pull the file back up. Um, and there was, I know there was some dissent the last time we, we talked about this, getting, uh, the comments from engineering, finalizing that. from engineering, finalizing that. So our next meeting is the twenty-eighth. I can have a, a final working draft over to the board.
That'd be great, Tony. I'm not trying, I'm not trying to put pressure on you, believe me, I did, I just see things coming.
Sure.
Okay.
And then I will check, Mary and I will check about the public hearing, if we can schedule for December twelfth. If not, then early January, I just, I have to double check that.
Just trying to, trying to push it forward, cause we've been talking about it a long time, and I know Mary needs more money to advertise and everything else, so we gotta incorporate all that into that.
So one random question, and I apologize, I don't know anything, I don't know the name of the street, I don't remember who the developer was, but they came in with a, with a plan for a house and a driveway that went up a narrow fifty-foot strip, and remember, it was like steep? It was really steep? Whatever happened to that?
I believe.
The one that they, the septic system was already in? They put the septic system first?
Dudley Road. No, that was the one off of Merriam.
Is that Conlon?
No. Was it the one on Merriam? No, that was the one on Merriam, I thought.
Joe Jenny?
Could've been.
I refuse that.
That's from the, what's that, Sapparappa?
Yeah, yeah, no, yeah.
That road there.
Yeah.
You know the one I'm talking about?
Yeah.
I'll have to check, I, what was, what is the, what is the request?
Huh?
What's the request to?
I'm just curious what happened to it, cause they came in, and then I think, I think I pointed out that the, yeah, the road was, the driveway was like really steep.
Going to Sapparappa.
Yeah, Levitt Road, going to Sapparappa.
And the engineer was there, and he pulled the plan out, and I said, you know, it's, way steeper than eight percent.
Yep.
And he said, no, you know, and he, and he looked at it, he goes, oh, yeah, right, so, and then he went away, and I haven't, we haven't seen him since. But remember, that's the one that had, the septic system was already installed, which I thought was weird.
Someone started to.
Whoever owned it prior to the person who came in front of you.
Yeah, yeah.
Thought he had carp launch to do apparently whatever he wanted to do.
One of the good old boys. All right, sorry, I just thought, popped into my head, I wanted to ask. Any, anything else from anybody?
One other, up on Route twelve, goes down a gully, and I thought that was all, you know, the Army Corps of Engineer flood plane, you know, but there's, there's been a lot of digging and construction going on down there. Are you aware?
Behind the, across from the police station.